Okay, ready by now, I think.
Recording in progress.
Okay, I'd like to open a regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Welcome everybody in Town Hall. Our first item is a roll call.
Chairman Harper?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rose?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Here.
Commissioner Witty?
Here.
Commissioner Barnes, I think he's gonna be late. Commissioner Gordon. Commissioner Mojo?
Here.
Commissioner Gross?
Here.
Commissioner Shanahan?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Good. The next item is public comment. I call for public comments on anything that's not related to the rezoning application because we'll have a separate time for public comment on that later. Is there anybody who'd like to comment on anything that's not the zoning application? Yes. If you could give your name and if you haven't signed in, please sign in, that would be good too.
I didn't, um, here, one. We'll just make one. I'm sorry. Name. Five, six, twenty, twenty-five. Please. Okay. We'll just make a bunch of lines. I don't know how many of you are gonna talk, so we'll just keep going.
Do you need any names besides my name?
Just your name.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening. Hi, my name is Tricia Cheek. I've been a nine-year resident of Superior. I have a letter that I would like to read to you that was written by a group of residents here in Superior. Dated April the 18th and sent to the Superior Town Council. Regarding the 15-acre property owned by the town of Superior, commonly referred to as Town 15, situated at the intersection of McCaslin Boulevard and Colton Road. The undersigned Town of Superior residents collectively request that you immediately take steps to rezone this property from its current commercial zoning to a zoning ordinance that would allow for the concepts below and preserve its natural beauty for our entire community. We strongly oppose any residential or commercial use of this parcel. We support OSAC's request to rezone Town 15 to open space natural. We are also open to other designations that include conditional civic or parks and recreation use. Conditional civic zoning could include options such as a town hall, Town of Superior staff offices, community meeting space, or other building uses that are specifically designed to benefit the residents of the Town of Superior with minimal impact to the adjacent homes. Our request is to limit any such civic use to one story and no greater than 25% of the property, leaving the remaining property open space natural or parks and low-impact recreational usage. Conditional parks and recreation zoning would support the Post 2021 Master Plan recommendation. Other low-impact options include a nature trail system, nature preserve, or community garden. We collectively understand the challenges this parcel presents, yet it is a tremendous community asset. The natural state of this property means a great deal to many of our residents. The wildlife on and adjacent to this natural habitat must be a consideration of any future discussion. Additionally, post-martial fire, we must be mindful of this parcel's proximity to the WUI or WUI. Any development this close to the WUI increases risk and available fuel for wildfire. We are requesting that this council immediately take the appropriate steps to protect this property from any future commercial or residential development. Our request is to officially rezone Town 15 as open space natural, parks and recreation, and/or civic. Sincerely, Town of Superior residents and what follow are approximately 200-and-some-odd signatures from residents all over the Town of Superior. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Does anybody else in? Sir?
Hi, I'm Ross Morgan. Shall I sign in?
Yes.
I've lived in Superior since 75 and since 1982 on my current property, which is at the corner of Third and Coal Creek, 305 West Coal Creek. And I don't know if you guys have any sway on this or not, but I've been hoping to see the alley get paved between my property and the homes behind us on the alley that's designated as Maple Street between Third and Fourth. It's a very muddy situation right now while it's raining and it impacts everyone who lives along there. People tracking mud into their garages and into their driveways and messing up cars right after they got washed if it happens to turn muddy right after you come from the car wash. I know that this process has been started and has been discussed by the Town Board and there's supposed to be some kind of a schedule, but I thought mine was, or not mine, but the one behind my house was supposed to be first on the list and they started with the one two alleys over from me where the folks that live there don't even want it paved. So I don't understand why that happened and why ours hasn't been because it is a kind of a critical thing. So if you can have any influence on that, on the budgeting or scheduling, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else who would like to make comments on non-agenda items? We have one attendee on Zoom. John Stoker. If you'd like to make a comment on a non-agenda item, could you raise your hand? Not seeing any hands raised, I'm going to assume that you don't. Okay. The next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes of our last meeting. Somebody like to move approval of the minutes?
I moved to approve the minutes, February 18th, 2025.
All second.
Do we need a roll call on that?
Yes.
Chairman Harper?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rose?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Witty?
Yes.
Commissioner Mojo?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanahan?
Yes.
All right.
I'd just like to comment that Commissioner Gordon has joined us on Zoom. Welcome back, sir. Glad, good to see you again.
Oh, it's good to be back. Sorry, there was some family stuff, maybe took care of it.
Uh huh. Okay. The next item is the rezoning application, which I guess is a public hearing. So. I'd like to, before I open the public hearing, is there proof of publication?
Yes.
Okay. In that case, I'll open the public hearing. I guess staff has a presentation since I see Jeffrey looking anxious to give it.
Hi there. I'm Jeffrey Weathers. I'm a planner with the Town of Superior and I'll be giving the presentation for this particular agenda item, which is the rezoning of half of Block Q, lots one through six on the north half. Sorry.
Do we want to do public comment first?
Oh.
Yes. Let's do public comment first and then you can do your presentation and then you can do, then we'll do questions before we close the public hearing. Or unless you would rather have him do his presentation and then public comment, it's...
I present.
Sounds like they want to hear a presentation.
I think it is a presentation.
Okay, presentation, then public comment, then questions from y'all, then we can close the public hearing. Okay.
That works.
Great.
Okay. So the application is to rezone lots one through six on Block Q in original town from what is the current zoning as light industry, which is IL to medium-density residential or RM. The applicant is Dorothy Cuffner, Family Trust, and I believe they have a representative who will be joining us virtually. Uh, great. Okay, I was gonna say, could it be a little later? This map shows where those lots are located in original town between Fourth and Fifth along Coal Creek across from Founder's Park. The combined six lots are about 42,000 square feet or just shy of an acre. This is an image taken from the county that shows the lots prior to the fire, the uses that existed on the lot. So that's the entire Block Q that's in the photo there. So you can imagine an alley running down the center sort of horizontally there. And before the fire, there was a home, a single-family home, a mobile home, and a school, a historic school that was no longer in use. I think it was used as storage, I heard, as well as sort of a industrial storage yard, if you will. Currently, as I said, the lots are zoned light industry. That's a zoning designation that is, according to the code, intended to accommodate comparatively less intensive enterprises engaged in the manufacturing, processing, creating, repairing, renovating, painting, cleaning, or assembling of goods and merchandise or equipment. The proposal would integrate these lots into the medium-density zone that exists on the other half of Block Q as well as the block to the south. The other zone districts immediately adjacent to these lots are RL or light residential, light... Excuse me. Low-density residential to the east and to the west, it's a PD or planned development that is Coal Creek Crossing. And then across the park, there is a commercial area known as the marketplace. Permitted uses in the light industry district include automobile service stations and washing facilities, bottling plants, industrial equipment sales and leasing, nurseries, storage facilities, and contractor supply yards. In general, the Coal Creek Crossing PD to the west and the RL zone to the east permit single-family homes and the Superior Marketplace permits retail and office and commercial uses. The RM zone district, which is the zone to the south, permits single unit as well as two and multi-unit dwellings up to six units per lot. Currently, the RL and RM zones allow accessory dwelling units up to one per single unit or duplex. With respect to development standards, as you can see here, the zones pretty much allow the same thing. They're within, you know, roughly the same minimum lot area, same height, same, almost the same lot coverage. In fact, the RM zone is the only big difference is that if you did multi-unit, you'd have a larger side setback. And you can see with IL, you know, it's quite a bit taller, although it would, you know, this particular property would need to be re-subdivided to attain the minimum lot area. But you can see that it's quite, quite similar. As detailed in the staff memo, staff finds this proposal to meet the acceptable criteria for zoning to minimum density residential insofar as the subject lots further several goal, insofar as the rezoning of the subject lots would further several goals and policies found in the 2012 comprehensive plan and 2025 housing strategies. Some of them are briefly outlined here, but they go into greater detail in those plans, of course. If Planning Commission finds that the application meets the criteria for rezoning, staff has included a resolution recommending approval to the Board of Trustees for the rezoning application for lots one through six, Block Q, in Superior's original town to medium-density residential. That concludes my presentation, but I can field questions now or after public comment?
Perhaps after we've heard some public comment. I was thinking, should we ask Ms. Cuffner to comment next if she has any comments?
You can unmute yourself if you wanna, if you want to talk for a minute.
Okay, sorry, I'm new to Zoom. So just so everyone knows, based on the current setbacks and stuff and the cost of ground in the area, the chances of anything over a duplex are slim to none in that area anyway. The property went under contract today to a buyer who, he plans on putting homes, single-family homes in there, and he has plans for no duplexes and things like that anyway. But we had already started this process, so that's where we're at. And we were trying to match in more to what is, you know, zoned there now so that there wouldn't be something out of place with the light industrial zoning.
Okay. Just for the avoidance of doubt, you, can you confirm that the property went under contract today? Perhaps you could just repeat what you said?
Yes, the property went under contract today. And like I said, the buyer, it's the same buyer for all six lots. He has the intention of putting a home for himself on one corner lot and he plans on, you know, eventually developing out the additional lots as like single-family homes. At the time we put in the app, we wanted to keep everything kind of contingent with what is already zoned to the south and on that block. That's why the trust chose to go with the RM concept and also to give potential buyers at that point more of an option to do a duplex. But like I said, when you look at the money standpoint, developers with the cost of the lots themselves, there's no money to be made for like large housing or apartment complex or anything like that. It's gonna be most likely single-family no matter what, whoever bought it. But it is under contract with a gentleman who, he has told us, he plans on putting single-family homes with an ADO.
Okay, thank you. Perhaps we should take some public comments?
I don't know, you go first. Well, I'll speak again. I'm Ross Morgan. I did write a letter to the Planning Commission and the Town Board. Did all of you receive it? Is there anybody that didn't read my letter?
No, I didn't.
You didn't?
I got them bad at checking the notes.
Well, I don't know if I should summarize it at this point or ask the applicant, I guess, if they're willing to withdraw their application for rezoning to RM and change it to RL since that's what she says it's going to be developed as. You think there's an opportunity for that?
So right now, we're gonna listen to the, to all of your comments and what you have to say and then they'll ask us questions and then during that conversation, we can, if that's something that the Planning Commission and then Town Board wants to pursue or ask of the applicant, then we'll, then we'll approach that as we get there.
All right, well, it seems like it might be a moot point at this point, but I'll summarize my letter for you, man. And say that basically I've lived here since 1975 and I noted in my letter that I sat on the very first Planning and Zoning Commission when the Town Board decided that it was time that we had zoning in Superior and we were charged with designating it. And, and it basically turned into a conversation between the good old boys in town, the property owners of the majority of the west side of town who decided that they wanted this zoning or that zoning and everybody said okay. And most of original town, of course, was zoned single-family or IL. I'm not IL. I'm misspeaking. IR, is that right?
RL.
RL. I've got my, all my numbers running around in my head. Of course, a lot of the west side of town got, west of Fourth Avenue got zoned as RM because there was presently a trailer park in there and interspersed with some single-family homes. But the, the subject property has always been occupied by a single-family home where the, it was basically the Cuffner Homestead where the family was raised. And when the siblings moved out and it was only the father... And when the siblings moved out and it was only the father and mother living there, Danny Cuffinor continued to live with them and take care of them. And then as they both passed on, Danny stayed on, and it was his place. And so there was that house and one trailer, one mobile home on the lot next door, Lot Number Two, and then the, the old Original Superior Schoolhouse was located on Lot Number Six. Danny had purchased that to keep it from being destroyed in its original location and moved it to his lot that, at the time, his father had given him, and it has changed since due to the family dynamics. But anyway, it's always been a fairly benign impact on the rest of the neighborhood in that it was just the one, the one home, the small mobile home and Danny's occasional business running scrap there where the rest of the time, which he did for just a short time, and then the rest of the time, it was an eclectic collection of antique equipment that a lot of us like to admire. Some people found it an eyesore, but it was one of my favorite places to be. And so with that said, the mention of the adjacent lots to the south being zoned RM, well, they've been developed, single-family. And so therefore, the property is bordered on the south, the east, and the west by, by single-family homes. And it would be, in my opinion, a huge burden on the rest of Original Town and the, the other neighbors that live to the south and the west if this were actually developed as RM. If, if there were such thing as six units per acre or six units per lot, excuse me, built there, it would create an additional traffic burden to what we've already got an overloaded traffic burden down Coal Creek Drive for people, from people passing through to and from Target and Costco, the marketplace. It would be unsightly, and I think I speak for very many of my neighbors in Original Town when, when I say that we're adamantly opposed to anything other than single-family or IL. I mean, what is it?
RL.
RL zoning there. We wish you would vote against this application for multifamily zoning there and send it back for reconsideration and development as single-family. I think you've gotten a number of other letters, and there are another bunch of people in attendance online, whether they're going to speak or not, who are of the same opinion. So that's all I have to say right now. I just wish that the applicant would withdraw their application based on their latest information. Thank you.
I'm just going to change this so you can look at the... There we go.
Does anybody else in Town Hall wish to speak?
Hello, my name is Tommy Lorden. I'm here with my wife from 403 West William, and we are adjacent to these lots in the alley. And while we were initially opposed for the reasons the gentleman prior to me mentioned, I think it's fair to say that we could be supportive. We're not opposed to the RM per se, as long as a couple of things were addressed as part of that and one for sure. And that is the, the notion that six units could possibly be developed on one of these lots. I appreciate the applicant saying that chances are slim to none, but that doesn't satisfy me. I want to hear none, and I want to hear none from the city. And so if there is a way, whether it's deed restriction, or I don't know how the government processes work, but now is the time to make sure that six units... I've seen stranger things happen, people building modular cubes and having crazy ideas, and it's not inconceivable at all that somebody, after all, were in Boulder County. So anything can happen, and I just think now's the time to make sure there's not six units per lot there. The second piece is just more of a comment. I understand it may not be appropriate for here in that the horses left the barn with short-term rentals, but to the degree ADUs are going to be contemplated on that alley, we're strongly opposed to the way it's, it's come into practice in Superior and Original Town. I don't know if we could get back to the photo of the close-up of the alley, but of the five ADUs or four ADUs that are on the alley right now? Okay, there's, three of them are reportedly doing short-term rentals, and it, you know, requires us to have our garage door shut more. Our neighbor does a fine job, for the record, a very fine job. But I just think Airbnbs are inherently problematic and not constructive to the fabric of the community that we're all desiring. You do have trespassing issues from strangers who don't mean any harm and all sorts of nuisances once in a while using your trash and things that would otherwise be more than welcome from a neighbor, but when they're a complete stranger, it's burdensome and it's a low-grade fever. And to the degree that might be incorporated into the planning for this lot, we'd sure appreciate it because short-term rentals are, putting more in that alley would be detrimental to our peace and enjoyment. And, but attention to the, the issue of potential of six units per lot would be, would be our priority if you were to move forward with the approval of this application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any more comments from Town Hall?
Yeah, writing and talking. Okay, I'm Bob McCool. Hello, all former Planning Commission members. I am, we're at 312 West Coal Creek Drive, so we're adjacent to the property as well. And as several of you know, a former Planning Commissioner and pretty well-versed on the processes and land use code. I just want to make three points. Development of the property is expected. I mean, we, there's no question about that. We, you know, I've been researching this and trying to figure out what can and can't happen, and the, the problem really is, is it's unclear what, what can happen with this property if it's zoned multifamily. It probably is slim, but you know, the chance of, I just can't figure it out. And I can't, and Town Staff hasn't been able to, I might have met with Matt, I, you know, I've researched as much as I can. It's, it's just not crystal clear how to figure out what can be built on multifamily. But we have a process for this, and we use it all the time. And to my knowledge, on the Planning Commission and on Town, or on the Town Board, we, we've never done a zoning change without a PD, with the exception of open space to natural. I don't think, I'd welcome any comments in that, but I don't think. The whole point of that process is that we all get to see what's intended when the zoning change happens. That's the point. It's in our code, which I know four, not, three or four of you up there went through this with, with us years ago, and in 162040, we, we, I mean, we discussed it, and I'm honestly disappointed that 162040 wasn't put up here for you guys to review. Hopefully, you've all looked at it and you know what it says, but you know, it's Original Superior's zoned low-density, "And the design standards of this district shall be considered in planning new residential development adjacent to the neighborhood." This would be a new residential development adjacent to the neighborhood. There's several other things you can read, but, and how this was communicated by staff to me is surprising. I'm just going to read it because I think it's really crystal clear. "Uses other than single-family residential adjacent to or within Original Superior may only rezone to the Residential Character Street, RCS district, or use this district's design standards as a starting point for a PD land use negotiation." We went through this for exactly this reason, and I'm begging you, you know, this is code. This isn't comprehensive plan. This is, this is our land use code, and that seems really clear to me. So I, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of with Tommy. I, I just want to know what's going to go there. And the answer to his question is, you go through a PD process for the rezone, and that's, I think that's the most important thing. And, and our code spells it out, and that's kind of how we're supposed to do this, so we all have a good sense of what is going to happen before we just change zoning and then immediately give somebody use by right. And then you don't have as much leverage to design how you'd like to see it designed. So just ask you to seriously consider the code that we spent a lot of time on, on the time that I was on the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Any further comments?
Ready?
I think Bob is finished, but if you'd like to speak, so you're free to do so.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's your, that's me up.
No, certainly not. Wouldn't do that.
I'm Gil Espinoza from 205 Third here in Superior. Been a longtime resident with my neighbors here. One thing, I have a small issue that's going to come up later, but I think the one thing of me and my neighbor, the issues that we have, one of the things that we focused on was the Town Board, you guys said after the fire that you're here to support the town, support us in our recovery. Everybody in my neighborhood burned out. And so the Cuffinors, we've always respected them, you know, they had their three little lots or big lots, whatever they are. And it was Original Town. So to change it, you're, you essentially are changing the town the way that it was. I mean, there's a lot of people who would like to buy those lots. I know that the price that the Cuffinors have on that property is a big issue, like who's going, who's going to buy it? Well, we would like people that are going to build families there. Our neighborhood is, it's a neighborhood. And so we're talking about multi-residentials. I, I know that there was a proposal in the past somewhere around, I never sat in on the talks, somewhere on the northeast part of town, it was going to be high residential area. Well, if you look at Coal Creek right now, we're going to increase the traffic. I mean, we already were complaining about the traffic. We have neighbors down the street on Fourth that have issues with all the traffic that's coming in from, going from McCaslin to Costco. Instead of going through Marshall, they're going through our neighborhood up to somebody Fifth or whatever that is and going back and coming in the back way. So the dynamics of our neighborhood, it's, it's, you talk about a village, that, that's where we are down there. I think sometimes as the board, I think you look at us as being just another part of Superior that we could make to look like that part of Superior, which those of us who've lived here all of our lives, that's not where, you know, that's where we're at. We do want to sandwich community, keep community, and that's just going to shift everything. I would love for the Cuffinors to have their three million that they want or whatever it is, but, and it's right in between residential areas, the new, the new Coal Creek, I call it New Coal Creek, and Old Town or Original Town, because nobody wants to hear Old Town. But the residents that survived the fire or made it through the fire, this is our neighborhood. You're going to ask, I don't know how many more people to come into the neighborhood. We're just now, in, in our area, we're starting to have families with little kids, you know, and, and they're going to, whether we like it or not, they're going to be out in the streets like in another three years, they're going to be out in the streets. So I think what I, my concern is about the, the infrastructure, and then you're also going to talk about the pressure that's going to be on our sewer, more trash, the water, and like you to consider about who we were before the fire and, and who we're going to be after the fire. So that's, that's probably my main issue. Also, the park, right now, a lot of people go down there, that's kind of a, a place where the community, neighbors walk their dogs, and we all meet each other and talk. We don't want to exclude other people, but it is going to impact our, our, the flavor of our community, our little village. So that's, that's kind of, that's where I'm at. Thank you for your time. Appreciate your, getting this meeting together, anyway. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Okay.
Never talked to one of these. So I'm Vince. I'm kind of like the new town guy, I think. I live on Third Ave. My family lives on Third Ave, my parents live on Third Ave. Our house burned down, we built it back up. I convinced my dumb brother to come live on William, like my family's here, I love this town. In addition, I'm kind of like the builder guy. So we build houses here, we think it's good, and most pertinent to today, we built all five of the houses that are adjacent to these lots. So I'm not the guy that bought this, by the way, so just if you were thinking that. I don't know who it is. I think they're doing single-family homes, but don't know. I guess like my goal is to, any delusional developer that's coming in and thinking they can do six homes here or six units per 50 by 140 lots, you can't. Okay? Also, I think the road to hell is paved in good intentions that if the town thinks they're going to, I don't know, get some affordable housing completed in this, it's also going to be just a terrible endeavor. I agree with what Gil said, you know, this is a single-family area for sure. The applicant knows that. They're going to get behaved terrifically as they should in single-family, and I just wanted to kind of walk through why I, all the homes there, put single-family there. The first reason was, you know, you just want to be liked as like a dude that builds things, right? You come in on the back of a fire and put more change into people's life that had a lot of change, that's not a great narrative, I would say. I think creating single-family homes is the minimum, and I think expected in this neighborhood. You know, maybe that's like a charlatan play or not, you know, it makes me feel better, but I really do think that that's one reason we didn't do multifamily. One of them is money, okay? So all five single-family homes that we built were on RM. We could have built duplexes like porch front, but it didn't pencil, okay? We don't do this for free. And single-family home's the only way that you can take a $500,000, $500,000 lot and have some type of margin in it. I say that to say that, you know, duplexes are potentially possible in RM. We explored that at one time, but when Troll Brothers and other developers and, you know, downtown are selling townhouses for $605,000 bucks, and we've got lots for $500,000 over here, it just doesn't work. So I think money is a big reason why single-family's the only thing that's even going to go over here. And then the last piece is just the codes that are currently there. We built 413, which is on the corner there on Fifth Avenue, great family, lots of kids. Then 411, same thing. And 409, we tried to get cute, I think, like, all right, let's do something fun, let's do duplexes, and we just couldn't figure it out with the codes. We didn't want to do front-load front door and alley-load front door like porch front did. Not that that was bad, those are great houses, fantastic, they were pre-fire when lots were cheaper. But to make it happen for us, we wanted to do something that was like artistic on 409 and have alley-loaded duplexes. and have alley-loaded duplexes with the front face entrances on William. And it just didn't make sense. 10-foot setbacks, 30-foot wide duplex. We asked for a variance with Steven Williams and were declined pretty much immediately. And the reason why is that through code in town of Superior, to get a variance, you have to have a hardship. And making money, you know, is not a hardship. So it didn't work, right? Or doing what you wanted to do is not a hardship. And so for good or for bad, there's a really cool single-family house there that's only 1,700 square feet now. So I don't know. In conclusion, I just, I don't want anybody to get any like cute ideas as a developer. I don't want the town to think that they're going to solve some grand problem with these, you know, less than an acre lots. And if anybody has questions, I feel like I really know cradle to grave, what we can do on R M and what that looks like. So yeah, that's it. Last thing my son wanted to say was nuggets in five. So Kayden, that's for you.
Thank you. Just give me a second. We have four attendance, people attending on Zoom at the moment. If any of you would like to speak, would you please raise, use the raise the hand symbol? And we'll come back to you shortly.
Good evening. Yeah, my name's Daryl McCool. And I did send you guys an email. And I don't want to speak for very long because Bob said a lot of what I wanted to say. But I'm a little bit disappointed in the process of this application using the comp plan, which is a policy document as their guiding principle, when we have land use code that clearly states that original town and new development adjacent to original town shall be designed to protect the existing family uses. So I don't know how the comp plan, and you can interpret the comp plan in many, many different ways, became the guiding principle for saying that R M is appropriate for this location. I would also like to point out that any R M that exists in original town is only single-family. So if you go over to Rogers Farm, they did use by right and they built on the platted lots and they don't, it's not R M. So everything surrounding within original town, aside from those three on Williams that were done before the fire, there's nothing but single-family. And it would be, and it sounds like there's a contract and somebody interested in doing single-family so that the idea of zoning multifamily doesn't really fit. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
For the lady that didn't read my letter, I just wanted to, and the rest of you, I just wanted to co-tell on what Bob and Daryl both brought up, that I did mention in my letter that specifically I have read the land use code numerous times since that day that I was a young and dumb kid watching the old guys divide up the town. And in section 162040, again, it specifically states that uses other than single-family residential adjacent to or within original Superior may only rezone to the Residential Character Street, RCS district, or use this district's design standards as a starting point for any PD land use negotiation. That's in our code. And so regardless of the applicant's self-serving statement that the trust feels that the requested zoning is more in line with the neighborhood and town planning, that is the letter of the code. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any more comments from Town Hall? Hearing none, seeing none. Let me ask, I'm not seeing any, can the people on Zoom hear me? I'm not seeing any hands raised on Zoom. Does anybody who's on Zoom at the moment want to make any comments? Going once, going twice, gone. Okay. Should I close the public hearing now? Keep it going?
No, you want to ask questions of staff before you close the public hearing. And then after you close the public hearing, we can't answer more questions. You can deliberate amongst yourselves.
Okay. Does anybody have?
Any questions about the rezoning process or RCS or anything?
It sounds like you want to extend your comments too, Jeffrey.
No, no.
You're just there for us to ask your questions? Okay.
I guess, Jeffrey, I have a question. And that is that it does, when we look at 162040, and it may be that we need, this might also dovetail over to Lea. The, was the staff?
Aware.
Aware. I'm sure you were aware of 162040.
Yes.
But how did that play into your recommendation as to this?
Okay, sure. So a comment that we've heard is that 162040 requires the rezoning to IL. So the way I read this is it says uses other than single-family residential adjacent to or within Superior, original town Superior can only be rezoned to RCS. So that means this doesn't, I mean, this is, so the first part applies. You have something that isn't single-family zoning. But by this standard, you couldn't rezone to low-density residential. You could only rezone to RCS, which is a commercial zoning. It allows greater intensity. It also, so it doesn't do what it's purported to do. And it's also kind of counterintuitive that if this was zoned R M, you couldn't rezone to RL because you would have to rezone to RCS. Also, there's a slight confusion about zoning and use. So this says single-family use. So R M, in my opinion, allows for single-family use. So it very well be, you could construe it as already being allowed to be rezoned outside of this. But staff thought that interpretation of this that makes more sense is that this is talking about if you were trying to upzone or make a use more intensive, like if you were going from IL to some other kind of commercial use, you would be forced to go RCS because the point of RCS, as it states, is to preserve the character of that area. So that staff agrees with, but we couldn't see how allowing for similar uses RL and R M, which it allows, also adding on, layering on commercial uses, how that would be with the intent of that particular provision in the code.
I guess I'm going to ask the question in a little different kind of way.
Okay.
Is it the staff's position or the town, maybe even the town's position, that any, that if there was to be a rezon of this property from its existing designation, that all, that the only possible rezoning would be RCS?
Do you want to, so?
No. I think that that's what we were saying is that this is maybe just confusing writing and that it makes no sense to say that this has to be commercial. It seems more with the intent of the code and the, you know, comp plan that we would want to preserve the residential.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
Yeah, that's the way we read it.
What I, but.
It's an interpretation.
So the converse to my question is, because the first part of that sentence says single-family use, RL is a single-family use.
It doesn't say you can rezone to that. It says if you're currently zoned to something other than that, you can only rezone RCS. It doesn't say you must rezone to single-family use. It says if you're currently zoned to something else, you can only rezone to RCS. So that applies. We could read it that way, but it seems strange.
You're bringing out the last phrase of the.
Hang on a second.
It's the.
The issue really is, do you need a PD to do it? Which could also be read from the way that.
That was the last part.
I don't think so. Rezone to Residential Character Street, which is a zoning designation itself, or?
Or use the district's design standards as a starting point for any PD.
For a PD.
So I do the or in there and say, you got two choices. You got two ways to go. And for this particular question, I'm leaving off the second part of the or. I'm just dealing with the first part. And when it says uses other than single-family residential may only rezone to RCS.
Yes.
And I guess what I'm trying to ask is that is it, if R M is other than single-family use?
It is. So you, so.
Do we have the ability to even approve or recommend a rezon that would permit other than single-family use?
It's a good question. And the answer is, we interpret this because of being illogical and not accomplishing what the code intends to do with this provision, which is to keep out commercial uses and to preserve the single-family character, blah, blah, blah. That seems more in keeping with saying, oh, yes, you could downzone this from something commercial to something residential, which is what is being proposed. No, it's not the town's proposal, by the way, to rezone this.
I'm just dealing with what the staff's position was on this. And if the staff, and to the extent that the staff looked at.
Yeah, we did not recommend to go RCS.
Got it.
But we could have, I guess.
Yeah.
One thing about RCS is that it also, there are two things that are allowed. And one is kind of commercial uses and the other one is residential uses. And the residential uses are RL or R M. So I don't see what the point would be to go RCS. You would just end up right back where you started from, except for that you would also allow commercial uses.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we looked through all of it and I, and we understand how, how when you read this by itself, and it seems like its intent is to rezon to RCS. But when you read the whole section, you know, starting from, you know, just all of 12 or 162040, and you read all of them, it feels like the intent was to maintain the character of original town. And that is single-family or single-unit, duplexes, RL, R M uses throughout original town, plus the PDs to the west. But to rezon to RCS, which is how if you take number two by itself, didn't seem to fall in line with the intent of.
And because the property to the south is R M.
Right. We, I mean, because the applicant requested R M, we reviewed it as though they're requesting something and we're just saying that this seems to meet the intent of the code as it's written. We're not saying that it can't be RCS or RL. We're just saying that R M seems to meet the intent of this code as it's written.
Staff also thinks that RL would be fine, which is not to the letter of, you know, this particular section of code. But we just assumed that the code was, you know, unclear on that point.
Right. If you read this, you would almost.
Sense the other way.
It would, you would, you wouldn't be certain that you could rezone to RL either. You would say you would have to rezone to RCS.
I'm just trying to explore. Because what the discussion was.
Right, we looked at.
As far as the staff.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Staff was equally perplexed by.
When we say staff looked at it, did legal look at it for the town?
I did look at it.
Oh, okay.
Do you agree with what staff is saying?
I do agree with what they're saying. I don't think that any one subsection of this section in its entirety should be read just individually, like in a vacuum. I think it's supposed to be holistic. And I also think that, I think that also you have to pay attention to section, subsection three, where it says, "A proposed rezoning that changes the single-family detached use to higher-density residential or non-residential uses shall include at least 50% of the lots on any existing phase block." So at least, I think what we've heard from staff, at least 50% of the rest, the remainder of the lots on Block Q are already zoned in the way that they're proposing to rezon them. So I think that's the more important subsection, but I do think it should be read holistically.
Thank you.
Can I ask, can I ask something quick? How come we're not looking, how come we're not looking at the second part of that statement though, requiring a PD?
It doesn't require.
Why is that just ignored?
It's not ignored. It doesn't require PD. It says that that's, that if you propose a PD, that you have to look at the RCS characteristics, which are designed.
But it said, but it said that you could either go to RCS or do a PD, right? So it does have a thing, if you don't go to, go to that RCS, you're supposed to do a PD.
I don't read it that way.
I mean, isn't that legally what or would mean for the town attorney?
I don't read it that way either.
So how do you consider or?
That's if a PD is proposed, you have to use RCS, as I just said. Because you could propose a PD, in which case you would still have to go to RCS. So basically, they're closing that loophole. The intent seems clear to me.
But to me, it doesn't seem like that's clear. Because I'm saying if I was going to do something, I was told you can buy five apples or six apples. It's kind of, you know, or means one or the other. It doesn't mean if you don't do this, you have to do that. I'm just confused at why we're ignoring that. Because all of your discussion just doesn't consider that part. So it sounds like you're just considering that second phrase, second clause, or do a PD. You're just ignoring that part.
So you're saying that even though it says that they could rezon to Residential Character Street, they cannot?
No, I'm not saying that.
You're saying if they don't do that, then they have to do a PD?
Yes.
Okay.
That's how I read it.
Could you comment, Bree?
Can you guys give me a second? I'm sorry.
Sorry?
Just one second.
Sure.
Bree, can you read number three again? Doesn't that suggest that you can upzone it?
Yes, it does.
So if you can upzone it, then that really wouldn't make sense.
Yeah, so like when you look at all of these together, it, they contradict each other. And so we, when we were reviewing it, we were trying to consider what the intent was when we, when the code was written, because none of us were here when the code was written. But it seemed.
We want to jump in who wrote the code is here. You can ask him.
I don't think that it makes sense. We just move forward with what the intent that we glean from reviewing the code as it's written.
I don't think you would get a PD on six lots.
Yeah, I don't.
Well, if somebody, if somebody really wanted to come in and do multifamily residential there, if they wanted to build a block of apartments, the first thing they do is give you a PD, isn't it?
No, they would, you, you could.
You would combine the lots.
Yeah, you would have to go through a replat process and then.
So if they buy these six lots, they can replot. And then if they do two of those plots together, if they have six total lots.
Mm-hmm.
Let's say they replot two of them together, four of them as two separate ones. There would be 12 different buildings they could fit on there.
Not, not if it's zoned RM, because RM is specific to the number of units permitted per lot. So if you combined lots, you do not increase the number of units that you can build. You might be able to build something that looks more like six units of an apartment complex, but you reduce the number of units that you could potentially build on. So by combining lots, you don't actually increase the density of of the zoning.
But so if you have two lots, you combine it into one, then all those setbacks will exist. And then you can do up to six.
Total.
You could do that then, right?
Still six, yeah.
That's what they're saying. It doesn't, it doesn't pencil out when you have the small lots. But if you combine them into one, then it could pencil out.
I don't mean to put words into Vince's mouth, but I think that he meant financially.
That's kind of what I heard too.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, in theory though, if you combine two lots and the setbacks then work.
Oh, yeah, I I think.
Put six on there.
I wouldn't even say that it's, I mean, impossible to fit six units on a lot, on a single lot. I mean, it might be. I, I mean, people are really creative. I don't know if you could financially make it work. You know, the stairwells, the parking, I don't know how you do it, but I mean, you know, they're really small. I guess.
So then no matter, so even as a single, you could get six on there, it's more likely as a, if you combine two lots, that they could do it.
Sure, but the density doesn't change. You're just objecting to doorways. Like, you know, you could, you could have a really big house too and have a lot of people living there. But it's just the doorways that would change.
Yeah, there's a setbacks and heights don't change.
Parking spaces, even if you had two lots, Michael, I don't think you could get six, 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 uh, six dwellings on it.
There were two parcels in that zone that are unbuilt with three lots each, I believe. No one's come forward to date.
I'd, I'd still like to be clear, if we can, on your interpretation of this issue around the PD. Bree, if you had a chance to think about it.
Sorry, um, my interpretation, it, it does read very, it's not very well-written. Obviously, it's written in 2010, so we can't speak to what the person was thinking when they wrote it. But I do think that as the, I, my legal interpretation is that this entire section should just be read holistically and not just pin-pricking any little tiny point, tiny points of, of sentences. I think that, um, that's all I can add. And I also, I do think that the subsection three is more on point for what, uh, the, um, planning and zoning is trying to do today, the staff.
So, I mean, hang on a sec.
Sorry, I was just gonna say.
Can I just finish, Michael? Thank you.
Yep, yep, sorry, no, no, sorry, it's my ADD jumping in.
I was gonna just say, so from, your interpretation is that it would be okay for us to move forward recommending this rezoning. We wouldn't be doing anything that was contrary to the town code.
I do not think so.
Thank you.
I'm just reading Martin's response to one of the letters. And it says, "To meet the required setbacks, parking limits, lot coverage allowances, and the height limits, it would be difficult to imagine a by-right project where someone could build more than two units per lot on a property zone as R. Did I get that? Did we draw an agreement?
Violent agreement.
Yes.
Martin's response.
Uh-huh, yeah. So, you know, there's a, there's a difference between what makes sense to build on a lot, what's financially feasible, what's, and and then what the code says is possible.
Or even physically possible.
Or or physically possible, for that matter, when it comes.
Physically possible, I'm not gonna deal with the money side.
Right, exactly. So, I mean, like, the, the feasibility of fitting six units on one of these 7,000-square-foot lots is slim to none. Vince said the same thing in his comments. But the code would technically allow it if someone had really wanted to do it, I guess, and figured out some crazy way to make parking underground or do, I, I don't know how it would be feasible, I don't know how it's feasible. But the code technically allows it.
For what it's worth, all, nearly all the lots in Coal Creek Crossing, which were immediately to the west of this lot, are 7,200 square feet, and they all have single-family homes on them. None of them has anything else.
I'd like to ask a question about the newer state laws. And some, we've, we've all, we're, we've been addressing that any single-family lot can have an ADU, a certain, you know, meeting certain requirements. Is there state, also state law that addresses wherever you have single-family, you also have to allow duplexes?
I'm not aware of a, of that. We just have the ADUs, and we allow ADUs in single-unit and duplex properties based on the approval last, last week.
Okay, but it's not in, but it's, it's not in state legislation that's coming down the pike that we'll have to follow. I'm sure you'd know.
I can let you guys know. Um, just give me a second.
Okay.
We'll follow up on that. I did not, if, if that's new, that would.
There's the T O C bill, never allowed with original town, but that's a whole nother can of worms.
There's a lot, I mean, there's so many, there's so many, I.
It would not be that.
I wait till they're, they pass, and then I go, oh, okay. Um, yeah.
I would like to ask Ms. Kupfer if you have any response to the comments you've heard this evening.
Um, I think Jeff pretty much has covered everything in terms of like the feasibility of anything over a duplex. I mean, parking is the major thing. The Kupfers have looked at when they, because they had multifamily that sold last year some lots of potentially looking at putting, you know, a triplex even in as an investment property, and it's just not feasible. You know, if the lots were a lot cheaper, like they were like 15, 20 years ago, I could say maybe you could see them feasibly putting something bigger in. But with the way Boulder County's land is at this point, and the town is superior with what the going rate for land per square foot is, it just isn't feasible for anything over a duplex.
If it helps, this is kind of more than opinion. There was, um, a study done as part of the housing assessment that we did last year. They found the same thing. They said, "Don't bother proposing anything more in original town because the land value is too high. You won't get it." So they were, they concurred too.
Michael, did you want to ask more, another, another question?
I was just, well, I was just kind of curious, what's the opposition to going to ML then? Or LM, sorry. RM, sorry, I'm doing the same thing.
You mean RL?
You mean RL, you mean RL, what's the opposition?
Yeah, why, what's the opposition to going to low density then? If, if it doesn't work, there's no option, there's no possibility of it happening. Why not just do it and save us all the argument?
So the.
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
Okay, so the reason the trust did that was because it left the door open for somebody if they wanted to do like a porch-front duplex. It gave potential buyers another option. The Kupfers don't want to see a sixplex per lot. I mean, that's, they don't want to see our old neighbors have to go through the traffic and stuff. But they didn't want to tie the hands of a potential buyer down the line. And in all honesty, everybody who has, before we went through this process, they did have interest in it as it's currently zoned. But my dad is one of the trustees. They didn't want to see like, uh, you know, any of the auto businesses go in there because he knows who the neighbors are. And he didn't want to see them have to put up with that. So that's why we looked into rezoning. And everybody who has looked at the lots, most of them are either, like, the gentleman who's gonna put the contract in, he's gonna live there. He doesn't want anything, you know, crazy there. And that's why he went from buying just a couple lots to wanting the whole block. Is because he wanted to be able to make sure that he doesn't have apartment buildings next to him and things. But my dad initially went for this zoning just so that it wouldn't, you know, they could do a duplex if they chose to. There's no, there was never any intent for more units than that.
Yeah, but I mean, it's kind of, once it's out of his hands, though, once it's out of your hands, you have no control anymore.
Correct.
So would the person who put in a contract be opposed to doing low?
He is open to that. He, like I said, his, his intent, and I talked to him and the reali- his realtor on Sunday, was that he, he's gonna build himself one house, a ranch house with an ADU, and then he was gonna keep, I believe, a lot next to him for a yard. And the third lot sounded like he was gonna stay open, and then he was gonna look into doing ranch-style homes on the other three lots with ADU.
So then he could conceivably.
To that. You know, we just didn't want to change the process. We had already started. Because if he does that, RM, doesn't matter, because he could still put a single-family home there.
But then when he sells it, once he sells, if it's already RM, again, it's out of his hands. Because if he's leaving two lots open, and he decides to move after a few years, it's RM, whatever goes there, goes there.
Yeah, but they're still gonna have to follow the same ordinances for height setbacks and all that. And with what he will have invested in the property, there's nobody that can make any money off of that. He's paying prime dollar for basically single-family lots.
Well, yeah, but, but we have no idea what the future holds. So I guess the question isn't, I'm not talking just financially, I'm talking about the possibility of, because nobody knows what's gonna happen in the next few years financially, because, I mean, obvious reasons. But I think the main thing is, if you do rezone it, and he decides to sell, or he, prices go way up because, I don't know, there's insane tariffs coming, and he has two lots, four lots, that he never built on. It's, and it's an RM. He can sell it as an RM and do whatever he wants, whoever moves in afterwards. Right? If it's scheduled RM.
Yeah, well, it'd be no different than if he, if we rezoned it and we sold one lot off to somebody. It still comes down to what the setbacks, they still have to follow all that. And with the parking requirements, there's no way for six units, there's nowhere to put parking. So it's kind of like, the, the code says you can put six units per lot. But when you start looking at push, come to shove with what the requirements are to do that build-by-right, it's pretty darn hard. There's not enough space for parking. You have really small units. It just.
Yeah, I mean, but, I mean, just thinking, you do port crochet underneath, you do port crochet, three cars in the front, three cars in the back, center aisle, stairs up to six units on top.
It's still gonna be a, a trench for space when you figure out what you have to have for setbacks. And with the build-out percentage and whatnot in the lot size.
Yeah, but it's still possible.
It's very, it, it would almost, with the amount of parking, you couldn't get them all on the, with the parking on the lot and the building, it would be almost impossible. We, we drew it out, and it just didn't pencil out with the requirements for that. And when you have the 10-foot setbacks on the sides, it narrows it in. It's not like where porch front has their duplexes and it's five-foot setbacks on the side yards. You then increased it to 10 on each side, you got a 30-foot wide. And your units would be, with the height restrictions, it, it would be tiny, tiny, tiny places, plus then you'd have to figure the parking situation out on top of that.
Yeah, I, I mean, again, it's not a design exercise. So, I mean, it could be done, especially if you combine two lots and you have 60 feet, you have three forward parking spots, three in the back. Bada bing, bada boom, there's your six parking spots.
But with your six, when you're saying combining lots, if you combine, you're, you're losing your opportunity then for an additional couple of units. And then you're, yes, you have more space, but you're still with the size constraints. And like Vince had said, if you go to a condo across the road, what this, you know, what the property price is, you could buy a condo across the road in downtown.
You're, you're a mute, sorry.
Your, your microphone's not on.
Yes, I, I think we've discussed potential designs. Thank you for the question. I mean, it's an important question. But I, I think we've gone down this rat hole far enough. Uh, I think I'd like to call the meeting, public hearing, over, and then we can discuss it among ourselves.
Or, well, we can ask questions, right?
If I close the public hearing, can we ask you questions?
No.
No.
Okay, so.
I have a question.
You have a question?
Question for town staff. Is there anything in the town code that precludes the applicant the ability to rezone from IL to RL?
We don't think so.
It would be the same question as to whether they could rezone to RM. If you read the, if, if you want to read the code the way that, that, a, a different way than we've think, than we feel that it was intended, then the answer is, the answer is the same for RL versus RM.
I think if you remove the RCS question and you ask the same question, I think staff's reason for saying RM is acceptable is because, one, the applicant said so, and two, it's consistent with the code, comp plan, the housing plan as we laid out. There's also maybe some practicality to having flexibility in things, um, from staff's perspective, uh, as opposed to shutting down, you know, ideas. Because, as we've said, who knows what the future brings. But at the moment, the land use, you know, the, the cost of the land is high. And, you know, we understand that it's most likely gonna be single-family house.
So rezoning to RL could alleviate the neighbors' concerns about density?
Yes.
Maybe.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Come back to me.
Steve?
No.
No. Amanda?
I guess no.
Anne?
Are we allowed to request that the, that the application be changed?
You can make a recommendation when, after we close the public hearing, you guys can discuss. And then your recommendation can include language however you want to put it.
Well, um.
Thank you.
Mike, Mike Barnes is actually on, online, but he's not here. But he, he did have a couple of issues that he wanted to raise, uh, which are really.
David, I did, did make it, uh, sorry.
Uh, I can't see you anymore, Mike. Do you have your cameras?
Yeah, yeah, let me see here.
Switched off?
I gotta, here we go. There we go.
There you go. Okay, Mike, welcome back.
Ah, thanks, thanks. Sorry I'm late. Uh, I guess what, yeah, I'm, I'm, after hearing all the discussion, it seems like the changing it to single-family does solve a lot of problems. Um, I did have one other question. Again, this gets to the heart of not knowing what's gonna happen in the future. But I think in the, the applicant indicated that the crane and the dozer removal would be done after the property sells. Um, my concern is that the, who, who's going, is the person who's interested in buying it now planning to remove that? Um, if not, I, I, what I'm concerned about is we'd be basically saying okay to rezoning a property to some sort of residential. But with having that crane and bulldozer there, it's basically in violation of the code for residential. So I, I, it, it seems like those two things to make it, comply with residence code and also be consistent with neighborhood, those should perhaps be removed before the property is sold, or else some definite commitment on when that would be done. So I guess that's a question for Ms. Kupfer, Mrs. Kupfer, sorry.
The crane and the dozer will be removed before closing, which was, is scheduled at the end of June. Um, we are in contact with. Uh, we are in contact with a heavy equipment hauler who is supposed to, uh, come out and take a look at that to see what has to be done to move it. So that's in the process right now.
Great, thank you. That's all I have, David.
Thank you, Mike. I've been looking at that dozer and that crane for about the last eight years and I actually have painted the old schoolhouse, the crane and the dozer, so maybe if I signed those paintings Picasso, they'd be worth a lot more, but, but I still like them. Thank you. If nobody has any more questions for staff, uh, if there's nobody interested in the town hall is coming, comments, can I close the public hearing and we can discuss this, what we'd like to do among ourselves? Okay, public hearing is closed. Thank you. Comments, questions? Go ahead.
I think what they're proposing of RM is reasonable. I mean, it's, the neighbors have the same thing. They could build six units on theirs that burnt down if they wanted to. I, and I, I just think that what they're asking for is reasonable. This is a fire victim. We should try and give them things that they can if it's reasonable, so that's my opinion.
So you're okay with RM?
Yeah.
You're, you're not pushing to go to RL or anything? RM is the.
No.
Okay.
It, it seems reasonable to me. It's, the neighbors have it. And, and I, I think that these worries, while valid, I, I don't think they'll come to fruition. And I, I think that this is a reasonable request. And no one wants industrial built there.
I'll go next. I agree, I agree a hundred percent.
I think getting industrial out of that is a good thing.
Okay, so you're an RM person too. Any more, for any more? David, you look like you'd like to comment.
It would seem that based on comments, testimony and evidence given tonight that RL and RM are functionally equivalent in terms of the number of units that could be built on those six lots. Um, entitlement constraints, as people have stated tonight, uh, would limit the, the amount or the number of units per lot to two. So a duplex is two units, a single family home with an ADU is two units. So it's reasonable to, um, infer that an RM zoning designation would functionally be limited to two units.
Actually, an R, a, a, a duplex could be four units. Or three units.
Because it could have an ADU.
Because it could have an ADU.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
That's why I voted against the including of the duplexes into the ADU piece. Because it didn't make that. Is that your editorial?
That's my editorial comment. I think that, uh, as long as we're, I, I.
Microphone.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, no, no.
You just didn't have your microphone on.
Uh, you know, I read sixteen, I read the, the, the original code and, um, you know, it talks about single families, uh, units. I don't know how the other piece got to RM. I, it's not my, it's not in my wheelhouse to figure that out, but when I read single family and um, we talk about the possibility of changing something and if the provision is that we can actually do a change, um, if the, if that's the opinion that we can make the change, I think, uh, change to anything other than RL is, um, not, not consistent with the original intent of the legislation.
Um, I think both designations of RM or RL make sense in this situation. I think in the staff's memo, they brought up middle housing, which is not a new topic for us. Um, I think when we've heard from, uh, you know, the town hall talking about having families in the neighborhoods, um, that includes, um, RM designations and, and families that afford those properties, um, and having a diversity of, of properties, um, in our towns, um, helps with that. Um, I think the space itself is, is limited physically, um, which prevents some of the larger fears I think that has been shared, um, tonight. Um, but you know, as, as I read it and as I understand it, um, and RM designation seems doable and plausible and aligns as does an RL if we chose to do that.
I have to say, I have sort of mixed feelings about this. Traditionally, most of Original Town has been single family and logically, I, you know, it seems this most likely will turn into single family. Um, but I also appreciate the neighbors wanting to codify that. And I feel like the situation would just all be a little bit easier if the requests were changed to RL. I don't, I'm not saying that I think we should dictate that, but it would be, it would be a good faith effort on the seller's part to revise the application.
Michael?
No, I, I agree with what was just said. I, I think RL is also the intent as I read it or, um, or do a PD, so I would just say and for future usage, I think it leaves it too open ended, so I'm RL. Say no to this, but recommend as an RL is basically what I would say.
Well, I think, I kinda like Commissioner Gross said, I think RM or RL, we're, we're gonna wind up with, uh, between six and 12 dwelling units on that parcel. If it's single family, if it goes the way of a lot of the other lots in Original Town, there'll be ADUs, so so we could have up to six ADUs there, which gives us 12 lots anyway. I'm, I could probably go either way. I, I, yeah, and I guess from the one comment from the audience about, uh, just, just costs is probably gonna push the economics toward doing single family homes anyway, so. So I, I, I'd probably be okay with as proposed RM, but I'd certainly, RL would be fine by me.
Apparently I have to have a comment too.
Nope, you don't.
I actually think that there will likely be 12 units on those, uh, lots anyway at the end of the day. Apparently the prospective buyer is proposing to build an farm. I, I think it's likely that there will be 12 dwellings on those, uh, units, on those lots anyway. Uh, there'll either be six single family homes with, uh, ADUs associated with them, uh, or there'll be duplexes, so it'll be two units a lot. Uh, I, I mean, having listened to all the discussion and listened to Ms. Cuffner's dis- description of the uh, buyer's intent, uh, I, I, I I'm a little uncomfortable, but I think I'm com- I'll, I'll leave it as RM. I'm okay leaving it as RM. And I actually, uh, what I'm also uncomfortable is I ended up being the deciding vote because we now have five people for RM versus four people for RL.
I, I want to say one thing, cause this is actually when Bob was on the commission, I remember this conversation, you know, probably 10 years ago, is that, you know, the job of the planning commission isn't to determine whether we want something or we don't want something. Our job is to say, does it align with the code and is it permissible? And what we were, what we asked tonight is from our legal counsel and she said, this is permissible to do this. And so we aren't here to say whether or not we would rather have L or M. Ours is to say is what they asked for permissible under the code. And again, I know there's differences of opinion between the people sitting out there and what our legal counsel, but we as a planning commission, I think have to align with our legal counsel and we have to, we should be voting that way, not on our hearts, not on what, cause I agree, I, it should be L, it seems like it's gonna get there anyways. It seems like this, this meeting almost didn't need to be had if we would have waited a week, uh, you know, if we'd have found this out. But I think we've got to remember what are we, what are we supposed to do as the commission and not what we want with our heart.
I, I think that, that, that's a very good point. Uh, I, I mean, the only basis, other
I don't know about that.
Discussion is if we wanted to make another recommendation because we felt that was better, we could do it. So, uh, what we're saying is.
Yeah, because then, sorry, under that definition, there's no reason for us to be here, just whatever legal says goes.
You guys don't have to do exactly what I say, but I do. I, I do, I do believe in what I said and I also discussed it with the other.
Right, no, I'm not saying we have to do what you, what you say.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is we, we, we're being asked if this is permissible under the, the regulations of the town. And that's what we're supposed to do. It's not whether Steve thinks this is a good idea and, and would do it personally or, this is, we're part of the commission, part of the, not elected but appointed people and we're supposed to say, is it, we're supposed to look at the code, look at the facts and listen and say, is it, does it align, not is it what we want.
And to, to respond to that, I would say that as I look, as I look at it and say, it's within the pur- purview of the planning commission to make a determination as to what the character of Original Town is and how this is um, protected or not protected, which is why I go and say that 16, 2040 says single family. And it's like, it's like everything else we do and that is that, you, you know, we look at design standards, we look at, you know, other standards and we make a determination as to whether it meet, it meets it. My view is it doesn't meet it because it's not a single family provision. So I, I'm agreeing, but I'm coming out the other way.
Yeah, I know, you're just disagreeing with our legal counsel.
Well, and I, I look at it as.
Stop, stop.
I just see it as what's there in Original Town already and there is the medium density right next door. Like that, that precedence there. It, it was built single family, but it's zoned medium, which I'm guessing is going to happen with this one as well. But I, I don't see how we can stand here and say you can't get this medium density when your neighbors have it. I, that's my interpretation.
David, can I add one more thing to this too? Uh, first of all, prior to the fire, there was a lot of medium density homes there in terms of those trailers, so there certainly was a precedent for medium density. And as someone who walks through that neighborhood every day with my dog, those duplexes that are there now, yeah, they're not single family homes, but they're sure pretty nice looking and I think they fit in with the character of the neighborhood, so. Other, other food for thought.
Ready for a resolution?
I hope so. We, we have actually, there were two resolutions. There was one for the town board, which I not quite sure why, I assume we can forget that one. Good, so we have a resolution for the planning commission.
So let me move resolution number PC dash two, series 2025. A resolution of the planning commission of the town of Superior recommending approval of an application to rezone lots one through six, block Q Superior West, case number RZN 2025 dash zero one.
How did I do, okay?
Am I good?
Very good.
Very good.
Would anybody like to second that?
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Uh, I think we need a roll call on it, don't we?
Chairman Harper?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rose?
No.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Witty?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Gordon?
No.
Commissioner Mojo?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanahan?
Yes.
It passes seven to two.
Thank you. Uh, I think I closed the public hearing.
Yeah. Yeah, we're good.
Okay, and actually it just reminds me to thank everybody for coming and expressing our opinions on this. Since I live very close to that neighborhood, I, I, I hope that what Ms. Cuffner is describing as being built there gets built there. And, uh, I, I can only say at this juncture, I shall miss being able to look at the crane and the bulldozer because I think they've added character to the neighborhood for all the time that I've lived there. Thank you all.
Go to a park.
It would be nice if they went to Astley Park, actually. But then you'd have kids playing or.
Yeah, you're right.
You'd have to fence them off.
Someone would get caught.
Okay.
Okay, let's see. Does anybody want to take a short?
Transportation plan?
Yes.
How long?
Who, who is the transportation plan?
Jeffrey? Will the trans-
Is this, is this, is this a long presentation or a short?
No, it is not. It's not long.
Okay, well then, then let's move ahead.
We should keep going.
Yeah.
If, if you want to take a five minute break and use the restroom, you're welcome to, you can call a five minute break.
If anybody wants to, just go, but we'll just keep rolling.
Okay.
Transportation plan update.
Let me fix this.
Transportation plan update.
I probably just earned the, I'm not gonna be a very popular neighbor for now.
Can you switch to the other?
Oh, I'm sorry, I have the, I stole it because.
I know, I could come steal it back if you want.
That's not what I want to do. I'm sorry.
It's up on the top, I think. It's the second one, it's like a tab there. Yeah.
Do you want, do you want to use the arrows or do you want the mouse?
I think I can use the arrows just fine.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so as you may have noticed or may not, maybe not, the, the date is off on this because I've stolen this from our um, consultant who's, uh, helping us do Fox Tuttle, who helped us do the um, transportation plan and, and presented this before the, um, transportation safety committee. So, uh, I'm not a traffic engineer. Um, I will try to follow her logic, uh, a little bit here, but, um, if I'm, if I don't understand some of these slides, I apologize. Um, I am working on the plan with her, but I don't know all the details, uh, as she does. Basically, these first few slides are gonna take you through the process and where we're at. We've, you know, done some development and goals recently, um, analyzed the existing condition, analyzed, uh, potential land use scenarios for undeveloped land. And now we're moving on to develop, um, the plan document, um, get a project list and an implementation strategy. Um, we continue to do public outreach. To date, we've done public outreach in phase one. We did Chili Fest, we did a survey. Um, there was, um, preliminary mapping, um, of, you know, issues and, um, that was all completed in the fall. Starting this month, uh, on, um, May 22nd, uh, we're gonna have a transportation speaker series panel. I hope everybody can make it to that. It's gonna be super fun, um, some really interesting panelists. Um, that will be in preparation for the open house where we will discuss the transportation plan and comp plan jointly on the 29th. And then, um, we will, uh, go forward and, and finish creating the plan and go move, move toward adoption. Um, this is another look at the schedule, so I think right now we're in network plus, uh, design scenarios and then prioritization drafts and final document report. Just a lot of different ways of looking at the schedule. Just a lot of different ways of looking at the schedule. Um, these are where we're at as far as the recommendations from the past transportation plan, uh, what we've accomplished, what we've decided to put on the shelf. Um, and things are, that are in progress or still need to be completed. Um, I won't go through all of them, um, but if you have any specific questions, we could, we could talk about it. I may or may not know about that, as I'm not a-
Maybe we could turn some lights off. I'm having a little trouble.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
There we go.
Did that work? Yep, that's really helpful to me, thanks. Um, as part of the existing conditions, you know, um, I think we've found out, you know, um, things that, you know, from other plans and planning efforts, you know, we've, we already, you know, kind of knew. Um, a large part of our population works elsewhere. Uh, a large part of our workforce comes from elsewhere. Um, a few people, uh, you know, live and work in town.
Two.
I might be the only one, actually.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, work remote, same too.
The average travel time to work in, for superior residents is twenty-three minutes, um, which is slightly lower than the state average. Um, as far as, uh, mode split, um, we have a significant amount of people who drive alone, um, a significant amount of people who work from home, and apparently a good deal of our residents carpool, which I did not know. Um, mode split, um, we end up, uh, what does she say? Um, we're a little lower than adjacent communities as far as, um, uh, yeah, peop-, uh, we have like one point four percent of our mode split. I'm sorry, um, anyway, um, yeah, so, um, that's to be expected, I think, mostly. Uh, and then, you know, all of these, uh, you know, the existing conditions, we're, we're basically trying to understand how to, you know, what, how our transportation meets the needs of our residents and, you know, people that are coming to town, visitors and what have you. Um, workforce, families, um, different stages of life. You know, we're trying to consider all of the modes of transportation, um, and whether or not we, you know, want to encourage active, more active transportation. The way that they approach existing conditions is to look at the network, the transportation network in layers. So, um, you know, you'll see on the next slides that kind of, you know, the analysis is broken up into individual modes. Um, and, you know, kind of perspectives on those modes. Um, the study area is the town of Superior, it includes a couple of counties. You may have heard of Boulder and Jefferson County, um, C dot roadways, um, but it mostly focuses on, on town roadways. Um, the pedestrian network analysis, um, uh, studied sidewalks, multi-use paths, soft surface trails, um, connections outside of town. Um, they, unlike car travel, you know, um, these active transportation modes generally get analyzed, um, uh, for future need in terms of improving safety, comfort and usability, rather than capacity, um, which is maybe how we should do all modes of transportation, but that's just my side. Um, people generally, um, don't complete a significant out of direction travel for, um, safe crossing. Uh, um, when they're, you know, using human power, like bikes or, or walking. Um, instead, they take the risk or they just make the trip by car. So this is basically focused on gap analysis, um, where there are gaps. You know, we're trying to address those gaps so that people can use pedestrian modes. And, um, from this, we'll be recommending, you know, how to fill these gaps and also where to enhance crossings. Uh, this is the bicycle network analysis, um, includes the buffered bike lanes. Um, it does not include anything like unmarked shoulders or parking lanes. Um, includes multi-use paths, it includes the soft surface trails. Um, the good news is that all of Superior is within a fourth mile of a bike facility. Um, but unfortunately, that doesn't necessarily mean that everybody can get where they're trying to go. Uh, so there are, you know, gaps in places that could, um, use improvement. Um, this is the transit network. Um, yes?
With buses, can we include the school buses in this?
Oh.
Um, because that's, that's one thing that's been very, uh-
Is your microphone on?
I'm sorry.
My life is that there's no school buses for my children and I end up driving them a lot, especially in the winter.
Yes. So- The plan, I can, we can talk about what that means to address that in the plan.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. It probably won't be on this particular map, that would be slightly confusing, but I know what you mean, yes.
All right.
Um, um, this includes the changes that are going to occur this month, where the two-two-eight will now be, um, coming through downtown, um, instead of, uh, you know, kind of just going around the circle there. Um, so I can talk more about that if you guys want to know about that route or anything. Um, but, uh, you know, basically, um, additional access to transit or local destinations would need to, um, be through other methods, you know, than RTD, because, you know, RTD, you know, we would need to, to think of other ways, because RTD pretty much has what it has. Um, so there are, there are options for that, but I think that that'll be addressed in the plan. Um, this map shows, you know, where we have intersections, what the mechanisms for, um, those intersections are, whether they be roundabouts or traffic lights. Uh, it also has all the speed limits through town. Um, roadway classification system, we just kept it the same, I think, as, as the previous plan. Um, pretty sure that, you know, that it's based on, um, how the roadways function in the context, and then also on volume. And the volume has not changed significantly enough to change any of the classifications. So they basically remain the same. Um,
Can we go back, just, I apologize, go back to the transit for just a question, a second? Does this include, you know, like you can schedule the, the, the flex to come, does this include this in that?
No.
Should it? I, I just, because that's, I have some neighbors who ride it like every day and, and do it. And it's, it is a nice feature.
That's fantastic. And I think we're going to have an expansion of the flex.
Oh, okay.
As well, coming up.
Yeah, it's pretty-
Yeah, we use that as well, especially with nineteen and under are free.
That's amazing. Okay, great, yeah, yeah.
It's a flex, so every now and then, we have three kids, we have two parents. One kid gets the flex.
Transportation plan, even though this map itself, the transit network analysis, doesn't look at that specifically, what does the transportation plan generally?
It acknowledges that, but it is interesting that it's not on the map or, you know, shown in any way. So I better, you know, double check on that, that's a good point. Yeah, the flex is big, and I think that, you know, so-called microtransit is, is big too. We have neighboring communities that are getting into more microtransit things, like on-demand transit of different kinds. Um, it's a really interesting, um, topic for our, a town of our size to connect some of these gaps, uh, in the transit network.
Can you explain that a little bit?
I could try, so, um, other towns have, uh, you know, it's sort of like the flex ride, or what I believe will be called the free ride here, uh, when we team up and, and do that. But they're basically like different kinds of on-demand, um, transit. I, I think that they could, the, yeah, I'm not sure where like the, the range, the full range. But for instance, like Longmont, um, just got seven cars that they, uh, they're like vans with, um, bike racks that they use for on-demand, um, kind of like ride share. Um, and there's an app, and you just get on your app and they'll be there in fifteen minutes and they'll take you anywhere in town. And, you know, of course, we have kind of a small town, but that could help us.
Public Uber, basically.
Public Uber, that's kind of like what it is, but it's enhanced because of the size of the, um, car. It's all, it's kind of like a share Uber too. Like if there's more than one, you know, uh, stop on the way, they might grab some other people. And, you know, there's some, there's some caveats to the Uber analogy, but, um, but it's, yeah, that's right. So, you know, there are all these kinds of things that we might explore in the future based on our analysis here.
Does VIA operate in Superior? That's the sort of, it operates in Boulder, you see a lot of VIA, VIA vans driving people around. I think it's about two dollars a trip or something like that.
VIA might-
Is that senior?
Sorry?
Is that senior, is that for seniors?
I think it's mostly aimed at seniors.
VIA has different kinds of mobility plans, and I think that we might, uh, no, I want to say that we're not in their zone. Um, but there could be instances where they don't have a geographical area because they're working, um, you know, like that, that we fall within their geographical area without the town being specifically involved in that. Um, that's another good question, can we check out, can, permit me to check out what VIA stands?
I'm, I'm making notes so we can follow.
Yeah, and I-
I really appreciate it.
Don't we, didn't, are, do we have car shares now? Like cards where people can check out the car?
We do have car share. We have one car share car that resides in the, um, origin building parking lot. Um, and yes, you can and should sign up for that and use the, use the promo code and, uh, try that out. Sixteen year olds cannot-
No, sixteen year olds can't drive.
I believe eighteen is there.
Rental cars are usually twenty-five, so that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, it, it works a little bit better than rental cars, but I can't remember, I don't, I think it's eighteen, but it could be as high as twenty-one, but it's not twenty-four. I'm sorry.
That's sixteen.
I'm blanking on that one, but it is a really good resource, it's a really good car, it's got ski racks, it's fairly affordable.
Yeah.
Staff uses it a lot, I use it a lot. Um, yeah.
Well, why don't you just, perhaps we should keep it at town hall?
I don't work at town hall. Oh, is that what you meant?
But I'm close.
We actually, um, consider getting more than one, and the location is really to be determined, so could be town hall.
Quick question, who pays for the flex ride? Is that the town, is it RTD, some combination?
I think that that is specifically RTD, I don't know that we have any budget for that. I, again, I apologize, I'm just, yeah, public works. Um, I'm a little like on the periphery of all these things, uh, so, yeah, there, those are good questions and I can get answers to them. And I will send them to you. Um, yeah, so the roadway designations haven't changed, mostly because, um, traffic volumes are, are fairly the same as they were. Um, yeah, so this has to do with, um, delay at lights, which is where, you know, we run into those traffic jam issues. And basically, um, there's no particular issue that they're resolving right now, assuming that, you know, the, um, improvements go forward at Marshall McCaslin here, which is where like we really have like the one hiccup in town. Um, and, um, yeah. This map shows, um, sort of future land use analysis and mostly finds that with the staff recommendations, or I don't know if they're recommendations, staff concepts of what might develop in town, um, that we're, you know, still mostly, uh, mostly good as far as, um, needing to make changes for future development that we have planned. Um, there's a couple of, uh, small things, uh, maybe capacity improvements, um, you know, that are already underway at Marshall McCaslin. Um, possibly some things on Seventy-Sixth Street, um, additional left turn lanes on Eighty-Eighth was the finding. Um, we've also talked about a vision statement, all this will go before the public, um, to get hashed out, but, um, we took a crack at it, um, just to have something to work from. Um, it's largely based on what we had in, uh, the last plan, um, with some tweaks. Um, uh, safe and sustainable transportation system, which meets the needs of all people using all modes of travel, is supportive of strategic economic development and minimizes environmental impacts. Um, we came up with some basic goals, again, this will go to the public, get comment, comments and, and make changes. Um, mobility for all users, integrated land use and transportation, um, collaboration with partners, whether they be neighboring jurisdiction or regional partners, um, equity, sustainability, uh, resiliency and environmental impact. Um, making sure that, um, you know, parking is serving us and not overwhelming us and, uh, creating a auto-centric environment. Um, transportation maintenance staying on top of what we already have. Um, and then public health and safety, uh, being a consideration. Um, yeah, bring this to the town board, um, for final review after we go through the, um, through the final, uh, engagement process and, and rewriting. And if you have any complaints, that's Alex Collins.
That was really good, thank you.
Yeah, sure. Any other?
I guess like, what's going to change?
What is going to change?
Yeah. I mean, what, what noticeable differences are there going to be when this transportation plan gets implemented? Any immediate ones or?
I don't think it's an, I don't think, uh, immediate changes, uh, are a part of it, um, really. Uh, I more think of it as like, uh, in years to the future, it'll be something to look to when we're considering grants and funding and how to spend money. And, and, um, I don't think it'll have any major impacts right off, it'll impact development um, insofar as, you know, we'll know from these studies that, you know, such and such a thing can develop here without having too much potential impact. Of course, there'll be more traffic studies done with each development and so on and so forth. But we could at least plan for what we need, uh, or, you know, at least have a, a list of what we think are, is necessary for any applicant. Um, you know, if someone proposes building in Saharius, we're going to tell them that, you know, there's potential impacts on, on Eighty-Eighth that they're going to have to consider. Um, things like that. Uh, I think that as far as like just setting the tone of like, we've found gaps, uh, in sidewalks, for instance, how are we going to address that? We've found gaps in, um-
Bicycles.
Bicycles, um, along, um, especially, you know, a, a, along roadways. There are some places where the, um, what people are using as a, as a bike path is too narrow for that. Um, so those could probably, um, use some attention. Um, perhaps, uh, you know, addressing bicycle gaps to areas like this, where you already have an extremely wide roadway, um, that most of it is shoulder anyway, doing something more enhanced for bicycles there. Yep, um, but nothing is like, uh, ready for implementation, it's more a direction.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome. Anything else? Thanks.
Awesome. Should we turn the lights back on?
Lights back on.
Sorry.
That's my only job.
All right.
Uh, okay. Updates.
Thank you, Jeff, and thank you for your presentation on the lot Q as well, appreciate it.
So I first want to look at, so I wanted to, we have the dinner with the, um, council on June-
Ninth.
Nineteenth?
Ninth.
Ninth.
Ninth, ninth, huh. Yes, PC dinner, council dinner.
It's on our paper.
June ninth. Oh, well, that's good of us to take that. How helpful. Um, so I, I don't know, I, I pulled up the work plan so that we could look at the work plan and we could talk about, I don't know if you want to like take items from the work plan or if you want to bring the work plan and go through it, it's up to you how, I don't, or if there's something else you want to talk to them about during that dinner. Um, I'm- Um, I'm all ears for-
So I had mentioned before that like Town Fifteen's portion of the master plan is going in front of the, um, town council soon and they were, we were, we probably should, it should probably go to planning commission before then? Is this the avenue?
So what, okay, how about we do this?
Shouldn't we get an update on the comprehensive plan before that June meeting so we can talk about what's in it?
So, yes.
We're a good setup, man. She's going to tell us it's going to be June third.
Right. Yes, exactly. So basically, I, what I wanted to do is give you guys, this is, this is kind of what May and early June looks like for the comprehensive plan engagement series. So we have the speaker series. Two of them are scheduled. I have a meeting with the, um, with our panelists for the cultural intelligence, um, speaker series on Thursday to figure out how they want to run the session and then pick a date. So that date will hopefully be sooner than later, but I'm gonna, we, we have to make sure that they're all available so that we, before we schedule the date. And then the, our economic development one is going to be in June. We have, um, a new economic development manager starting on May fourteenth for the town and we want her to participate as one of the panelists in this discussion, especially now that it, that she's new and she, she'll bring, you know, her own background and I'd like for her to get like, uh, you know, a week or two of town experience before she, she jumps in and starts talking about economic development. Um, but, uh, I expect that this one will happen sometime in June, um, which will be after the open house, which wasn't our goal, but it's the timeline that has become required because of her start date and the availability of the other panelist for the economic development session, so. Um, and then we have a summer market where we're going to just basically have a table there to talk about bringing people to the open house. It, we're not going to have any maps or goals or any, any, basically it's going to be a flyer that says, come to the open house and if you can't come to the open house, go to Shape Superior on or after May twenty-ninth and provide feedback on goals and future land use map for all the opportunity zones. So at the open house on May twenty-ninth, we'll have boards set up. There'll be a little bit of a history of what we've gone through thus far on the comprehensive plan. And then there'll be different sections in the open area in the community center, um, where you'll see the opportunity zones and what the uses are proposed based on our direction from you and the council, um, last, two months ago now in, in March, I think we met, um. And then we'll have like, uh, some vision and goals, uh, preliminary vision and goals for you to review and comment on. So, starting May twenty-ninth, we'll have that open house and then we'll add the information that is shared at the open house to this, um, Shape Superior website for the comprehensive plan and we'll ask for comments on vision, goals and future land use, um, uh, future land uses and opportunity zones. So that's this next like month in comprehensive plan land. Um, we will not have, we, we might have some preliminary stuff from the open house at the June third meeting, but we're not going to have like data, because the ability for people to comment on Shape Superior will still be ongoing at the time of that June third meeting. We do encourage you all to come to the speaker series or listen to them live or listen to them on YouTube after they occur because they will all be available to, to listen to anytime after they happen. So I don't, so I'm not sure exactly what we'll have from, at the June third for an update other than commenting on our experiences from all of these different engagement opportunities that we have in between now and then. Um, but I won't have like a summary of, of, of much. And what are your thoughts?
Can you tell us a little bit more about the format or content, like maybe just the one this week on housing?
Yes, so the speaker series, uh, the, the impetus and the idea behind them is to like have panelists who are subject matter experts in these four particular areas come and talk about what they see and hear out in their professional world. Not necessarily specific, uh, there might be some like superior related questions. We have like, we're setting of like, um, it's basically like a panelist with people in the audience and we'll have a facilitator from Cushing Terrell, Nora will be there and we'll have pre- we will have, we have questions for them, but we're also anticipating allowing residents to ask questions as we go through. The facilitator will try to guide the conversation so that we don't fall down rabbit holes or get stuck in, you know, very super detailed, superior related conversations and we're trying, what, the idea is to help people understand when we talk about, you know, housing, what, what are we talking about and what do they see? Uh, though for housing, there's going to be a real estate agent, um, someone from Boulder Creek neighborhoods, um, a, who's the, uh, and affordable housing and then, and someone, I think they're both from, and then someone from Cushing Terrell. Oh, that might be the same person. I don't know if, is, I think there's three. Is there four? Three or four. Anyhow, they'll, they'll talk about what they hear and what they see as it pertains to their areas of expertise in housing. Um, and it may, they may be able to relate it in some ways to Superior because they all are familiar with Superior. Um, but it's not, uh, the idea is it's not coming from staff and it's not necessarily coming from residents. It's, you know, asking people where, what they see out there in, in these topic areas and getting, helping residents understand when, like for the transportation one, when we talk about traffic, uh, what are we talking about? What is congestion? You know, what is, um, when we say that the, that it, it's not going to have an impact, how, how, how do you know? Where does that come from? Um, questions like that.
Okay. Thank you. It's helpful.
So the, our first opportunity to see what's proposed for the op, um, the open areas, like the marketplace and Saharius, will be May the twenty-ninth?
Yes, I mean, technically we presented those to you and you gave us direction as to what should be, um, included in each of the opportunity areas for uses, um, that we should bring to the engagement. So based, so we brought those to you and we brought them to the council back in March and then based on your direction, we've created, you know, boards that, uh, and we're debating, the open house might actually just have the opportunity areas highlighted and, and then it might just say what uses, what, what do you see here? What, what should we put here? So that residents-
They have a meeting in March.
Was it February? It was February. I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. I'm just trying to-
I was like, when was our last meeting? It was a long time ago. I know, um, but the idea is to like allow residents to comment on what uses they think belong in all the opportunity zones. Um, we, uh, yeah. Uh, so basically that's the opportunity for people to come and say what they feel like makes sense for those areas. Um, and then we'll have it available online for them to, to add comments there if they can't make it to the open house session.
We didn't really discuss much about those opportunity areas in February. That was all about, uh, land use updates for accessory dwelling units and things.
When was it? It was, I will find it.
I'm just looking at the minutes of the meeting.
February fourth.
That's right. I actually read them.
February fourth.
Was February fourth? Oh my gosh, my computer's frozen now.
I'm looking at the Cushing Terrell.
Yeah, that, when we went through that is when we did it.
There wasn't very much in that about any of the individual areas.
There, well, there was enough for us to get yelled at later.
Yeah.
I was going to say.
Believe me, I got my, I got my phone call.
The reason, so on the, not the fourth, but the eighteenth, we went through the, we had a bunch of people come and do public comment on Town Fifteen. If you remember them doing, that was after the meeting where we discussed these future land uses. Um, and so we've got a lot of comments on Town Fifteen since then. Um, which leads me to the next meeting on June third.
So it is getting covered.
We are getting, yes. So there was a request. I don't, so the request is to look at and consider rezoning Town Fifteen to, um, something that allows parks, civic and open space uses. Um, right now we're looking at OS, uh, dash R, which is like the open space recreation designation. We don't have a lot of designations in our code, but it, Town Fifteen is also in the Rock Creek PD. So I'm, I don't want to say that that's what our recommendation is going to be for that because I, we need to find out how you remove a property from a PD or if there's something in the Rock Creek PD that makes more sense to zone, to rezone it to, rather than the RAC that it's currently zoned in.
But this would be a staff proposal on rezoning.
This is a, this is, we're going to bring you an, an ordinance to review and consider. I don't, that was my direction. I-
Okay.
Because it's, it's commercial right now, right?
It is zoned RAC, which is a commercial zoning district, yes.
Um.
So, yeah, the, the, the twenty-ninth open house and like it is, it is an opportunity zone. It will be part of that conversation and we will take all of the comments that come through on what uses residents want to see there and that will be part of the comprehensive planning process, but at the same time, my direction is to look at and consider rezoning it.
And the, uh, uh, should I ask where the direction's coming from?
It's coming from above me.
You've answered my question. Can I, can I, can I then ask what the Guardian annexation and zoning piece is because I'm going, um, let me just ask that question.
Yes, so there is a requ, there is a annexation petition that's been submitted for um, the Turnbull property, which is south of the Guardian storage, between Sagamore and Guardian.
Oh.
Um,
We, we've chatted about that before at a meeting.
Right.
And so that, you want that to come at the June third meeting as well?
Correct, because they, this is a, this goes through a state, and our annexation code follows state statute, which puts timelines and limits on when everything gets heard. And our town code requires annexations and zoning, obviously, to go through planning commission in advance of the council hearing for recommendations for annexation, um.
I just want everybody to be prepared for a longer than two hour meeting on June third.
Yes, that is why this is here like this.
You're going to make it longer than two hours?
No, I, I, you know, I, both of those are major items.
We'll do the Guardian storage annexation first because that has to be completed that night, um, in order to meet the requirement that the hearing for Guardian annexation goes to the the council on the twenty-third of June.
Um, So that'll be number one on the agenda.
That'll be number one on the agenda.
And then we'll do the Town Fifteen rezone issues second.
Correct. Yep.
Okay, but just, again, I'm just, I want everybody to be prepared that something will be, we're not going to run through this meeting in an hour and a half.
Yeah, so, yes, so those two things will be at the June third meeting. Um, and then whatever energy you have left at the end, we can talk about all of the engagement events. And I'll have dates for the economic development one.
We should have dinner in the middle or something, like, do you want?
I'll bring, I'll make sure there's dessert. How's that?
Sugar, sugar.
Yeah. You're not allowed to have it before. You can only have it during or after.
Okay.
Maybe coffee.
Yeah, yes, and coffee.
So I have some real concerns about discussing rezoning Town Fifteen when we're in the middle of engagement around land use.
Yeah.
And, and one of the, one of the big concerns I have is very often Town Fifteen is talked about on its own. Hmm, and of, of course, lots of people love open space. Most, a lot of people live in this town because they like all of our open space. But there are competing, um, interests, you know, tax revenue for the town, you know, fiscal responsibility for the town, affordable housing, um, you know, lots of, there's lots of other things and I don't feel like we as a town are ready to address this. Um, one of the things that I would love to hear is maybe some alternatives for Town Fifteen. This is a town-owned property. If it were to become open space, could there be funding to buy that property? I mean, I, we, I'm not sure how it would really work. I am nowhere near a lawyer. But could there be open space funds to cover the cost of Town Fifteen so that maybe the town could do something with another parcel? Um, to further town, townwide goals? Or is there a way to split Town Fifteen and say, oh, well, we can make this part of it open space and we can, I mean, this probably comes more in a, like a PD or something, but part open space, part some other use. Um, some buffer. One, I chatted with one resident of Town Fifteen and they suggested that if there were building, if- if it could be close to Colton Road, most of the views could be preserved. I don't know, I would just love their, I would love, love us to have many, many more thoughts and discussions and points to consider before we try to pin anything down and say, oh, this should be one specific thing.
I want you to write all those things down that you just said. This is on video too, so you can go back to the video and remember them for this meeting on the 3rd because this is the exact conversation that we'll be having on the 3rd when we bring this to you. And I, you know, there's, the property is already zoned RAC, so, you know, there's zoning on properties and then there's the comprehensive plan, which speaks to what the town looks and sees in the future for properties. And I'm not disagreeing with your feelings on moving forward with a rezone of a property at the same time we're looking at what potential future uses might be for a property. But exploring the use is, is, and I have been asked to look at what fiscal, what we'd be losing, I guess, based on, you know, possible uses of, of the, the property for low, medium, high, not, I don't, I won't say density, I don't know, like the fiscal impacts of, of developing the property, what would be, what would potential losses and revenue look like for that, which I don't know exactly how I'm going to put that together, but that will also be part of the presentation. Have some work to do between now and that meeting and when I bring it to you, but-
To the extent something is coming before the planning commission, may I also suggest that we invite OSAC to that meeting to make their comments known as regards town 15?
Yeah, at least the chairman.
So, yeah, so OSAC, OSAC had a dinner with town council and they actually discussed town 15 and the end of their meeting, they, they talked about town 15, Saharius, mostly those two, and then like property along Cold Creek. They have very specific wishes, they have guidelines if Saharius is developed, they were very buttoned up, very, very buttoned up. But I would encourage everybody to watch the last, I don't know, maybe 15 minutes of that meeting.
Was it recorded?
It was recorded, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I can send out a link to everybody.
Is it on the town website?
It's on the website.
It is on the website, yeah. Yeah, I don't remember, was it April 14th? It was in that email that I forwarded to you, Renee.
Also, I just wanted to say that in the town 15 rezone, if there was an option to push that to after we have a master plan, then we rezone it? It just feels like, why would we rezone it in the middle of our master plan design?
These are great comments that you should bring when I bring it to you.
All right.
I don't have good answers for you, but I'm, I mean, this is the direction that I've been, that, that, that we're moving out of the, and it's not, you know, it's not absurd to consider rezoning a property because, and having the comprehensive plan speak to similar and more uses. The comprehensive plan talks about uses on other properties that are zoned, that don't include zone, their zoning doesn't match what the comprehensive plan says or states. So, you know, you can separate the two. I, I mean, ideally, you're right, you would look at weighting, but there's a lot of concern over town 15 and we're not, I don't want to, I don't want to make town 15 different from the other opportunity areas when we're looking at it for the comprehensive plan, I guess is the best way to put it. It's like, we're going to treat all the opportunities the same and we're going to give them all the same voice from the engagement side of things, even though it may not have the same voice from outside of the comprehensive plan process, so.
Is it scheduled then for the town board meeting, like the following?
The council, yeah.
So, okay, so it's on the week of the, the 10th, the 9th that we're having dinner with them?
That's right, we're, we're meeting on the 3rd, having dinner with them on the 9th.
And they're meeting on the 9th.
That's going to be voted on whether we rezone?
No, I think they have to have a longer timeframe.
No, yeah, I think it's going to be later, the next meeting after that. What was, when, what was the date that the town council was going to do the Guardian?
The 23rd.
Yeah, I think that's the meeting.
That they'll do both.
Yeah, I'm just looking.
So our discussion with them on the 9th will add, give them two weeks after that to digest our discussion over dinner.
Long digestion.
Yeah.
Don't have anything.
Oh, so they have it, they actually have it scheduled for the 9th.
They do?
They do.
Town 15?
Mm-hmm.
How interesting.
I was like, I know there was a reason, I made it June 3rd. We, you know, to rezone, you have to notice, so the notices have to be out 15 days before the hearing, so the 20th was too quick of a turnaround of May to do it, so.
It feels like this is like someone's pet little project or something.
I think it's OSAC's pet little project.
Right, but that shouldn't be the town, the town shouldn't.
Anyhow.
Anyhow.
We all-
It's a big project, actually.
We will review it as-
Yeah, OSAC is definitely in favor of open space. I mean, that's what they're all about, that's what they're all about. But I don't think that's what's driving the calendar.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Anything else?
That's, oh, did you, did you, did we decide what, is, is the work plan what you want to bring to the board? Or do you want to bring something more or something different?
It's probably gonna be 15.
I think, I think we're going to be, we'll talk about the, the comprehensive plan and we'll talk about town 15. I think everything else is nice to have on a, on the work plan, but I think if we're, if we have to maximize our opportunity over dinner-
Do you want me to make any?
Really, developing the comprehensive plan is actually the only item, we require some action on that.
Right, okay, then I'll, I'll just have the work plan available for that dinner and then you can lead the-
There might be some associated things like, if they have an update on what's going on with the airport, that would be interesting, for instance. I saw the case got dismissed or-
Well, they've appealed, they're gonna appeal it.
If you want to-
Is it going anywhere or whatever, you know, just if there, if there's any information they can provide on-
If you want to send me things that you'd like to include, I can, I can, you know, not use the work plan and I can just make some, like a list of bullet points that you'd like to discuss with them and have the comprehensive plan be at the top with some dates of stuff. And then if you want to send me questions that you want to consider, I can bring that, so we are going to meet on the 3rd before we meet with, we have their dinner, so on the 3rd I can have all the questions that you've sent in a document so that you can review them and say yes or no. So just, if you want, if you think you might want to talk about something, send me a bullet point and I'll just compile all those bullet points over the next month and then I'll bring them to you on the 3rd and you can review them and cross them off or add to them. Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. To the extent possible, I would love to talk about engagement and what we're hearing from residents about different things. I would like that to be part of the conversation around the comprehensive plan and town 15. So we have a little more context.
And we could look at having a, we could do two meetings in June and just plan on scheduling a second meeting so, because, you know, we might be tired after talking about rezonings and we could, and I'm not going to have like a huge update for the, what we've heard after the 29th by the time we get to the 3rd, but by the second meeting, not the 9th, but the, if we-
It would be the 17th if you did it as well.
Yeah, the 17th would be our regular June meeting. So we could meet on the 3rd and then we could plan to meet on the 17th and just have more of a discussion on what we've heard from our engagement with the comprehensive plan.
And that would be before the council votes on anything related to town 15?
No.
They'll be, they'll be voting, they'll be, you'll want to talk about that on the 9th? At your dinner.
And they'll vote. And they'll vote.
After dinner.
After our dinner.
After we give them indigestion.
It's on, it's, let's put it this way, it's on their agenda to discuss.
Yes.
And it doesn't really, I mean, it's like Renee saying, it does, even if they change the current zoning, it doesn't drive what the comprehensive plan says the opportunities may be. Because in principle, they could go ahead and rezone it again.
Right, yeah, and the town owns it, so.
Right, yeah. So if you want, if you want, we should, send me a bullet point and I'll make sure to include town 15 on a bullet point with the comprehensive plan and the airport.
I mean, I think we could do the comprehensive plans, we could just say sort of Saharius, I mean, the opportunity areas, which, I mean, I don't know what anybody else thinks, but they strike me as being the sort of core of the comprehensive plan, really.
They're the core of the land use, the future land use section of that.
Yeah.
Is Saharius for sale?
Yes.
It's been for sale forever.
Forever.
But it's commercial, right?
It's zoned RAC, the same, yes.
There's still a sign that you drive by every day.
Well, the only other thing I know is happening is that there actually, there's a groundbreaking on-
Yes, tomorrow.
Block 5, block, block 8, is it?
Block 8.
Block 8, tomorrow at 11 o'clock. So construction is actually starting.
Yes.
I, I, I said I'd go.
Yep.
It's exciting.
Unless it's raining.
I know.
And then you'll wait.
Might be really unfortunate weather, we'll see, maybe it'll stop by then, we can all hope.
I, I don't, I haven't had, I, I got a note saying, thank you, be pleased to see you or something like that. Is, is there a place where people are supposed to be meeting or we just turn up and stand?
Just go to Gateway in Maine, you'll see where everyone is, yeah. It's gonna be-
I'll work from, I'll see if I can find a bigger arm.
I mean, right now it's just a big open field, so you'll be able to see everyone.
I figured maybe they'd arrange one of those vacant spaces along Main Street.
I know, because it's raining, yeah, I don't know, I don't think so.
I think we're done, oh yes, last item on the agenda, we're adjourned.